Okay. Sheldon, is Sheldon here?
Let's see if he shows up.
Sheldon's in the waiting room. He said he just texted.
I'm going to promote him to a panelist now. Okay.
Hi Sheldon. Oh, you're muted.
Hey, hey, I just got on.
Perfect. Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order them. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Penn Loomis City Schools Board of Education, and our first order of business is adoption and approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Move to approve.
Opposed? Okay. So now we're moving on to our discussion regarding reopening schools, learning models, instruction, health and safety, and other issues. And then we're going to be talking about next steps. And before we start, I just want to remind everybody that this is an open forum. People will be expressing opinions that you or we may not agree with, but we still need to listen to them in a civil manner. So also, I want to tell people who want the Spanish translation, of course, I'm saying this in English, so I don't know if they'll get it, but if you go to interpretation, you click on that, you click on Spanish, and there will be ongoing translation for the entire meeting.
Cliff, why don't you jump in and give a translation on it? I've unmuted you.
Okay.
Thank you, Cliff. Okay, so we're doing it the same way. We ask people to raise their hand, and I will call on them.
Yeah, well, we're going to, we've, we, just to kind of recap for some folks that may or may not have been here at our first meeting last week is, I think probably the easiest thing for me to do is let me share my screen. Let's see. At last week's board meeting, we discussed what the challenges were. What challenges does distance learning present for students and families? So the challenges that distance learning presented, and what were the possible solutions? We also talked about what some of the challenges were that distance learning presented for staff, and what were some of the possible solutions. Tonight, the focus conversation is going to be, for the next question, is what should the evaluation criteria be for determining movement from distance-only instruction to hybrid learning? So we're currently starting in distance learning, and it's anticipated at some point we would move students from distance learning to hybrid instruction. And what hybrid instruction is, is we still are following the county health guidelines, but because the county health guidelines limit distancing for students and teachers to at least a six-feet distance, we cannot accommodate all students in a single classroom at a given time. So it would most look like half of their, their week, let's just say, as an example, or half of their time or their day would be spent in in distance learning, and another half, they would be working, they would be working in a classroom. That's when we talk about hybrid learning, we mean not all distance, not all in class, but a combination of both. Okay? And so what would be the evaluation criteria for that? What kind of things should we be looking at to determine moving from distance only to hybrid? And then what are the pros and cons of deciding how long to stay in distance learning? Because we've certainly heard from people that, well, you should decide, you should pick a date, how long you're going to be in distance learning. And so what are some of the pros of that? And what are some of the cons of that? And so those are the questions that we're going to focus on for the first part of this segment.
Okay, before we start, I had a question about introducing who the panelists are. So it's the board, and Gary Callahan, superintendent, Matthew Harris, Cliff DeGraw, Chris Thomas, Liz Chacon. Did I leave anybody out? And then the five board members, myself, Maddie Cloud, Sheldon Jen, Caitlin Quinn, Joanna Pahn. My mind went blank there for a moment.
Can we introduce our translator as well?
Oh, yes. Martine Reynoso? Did I get that right?
He's translating, and he's going to, it's going to come, he's already in this all Spanish.
Okay, did I say his name correctly? As our translator, Martine Reynoso?
Yeah, Reynoso, yeah.
Thank you, Martine.
So if you have, would like to just talk about distance learning, the question that I just posed, you feel free to raise your hand. It's going to be an interactive conversation. You can anticipate that the board will be asking questions of other board members, or also asking questions from participants.
And I, let's start. We will start with Sarah Obaji. Did I say that right? Sarah? No, she's gone. Tiffany Kelly? Tiffany?
I'm muted. I think, okay, am I unmuted?
Now you are. We can hear you just fine.
Okay, my only thing I want to put in the same thing I did the last meeting is textbooks and less screen time. I'm really worried about all this screen timing with my kids. I think we need textbooks, packets, Google Slides. It's not so much of the screen time. I just wanted to say that again, like I did last week. That's my only problem with all this. I know we have to go distance learning. There's no other if and or, but yes, I would love my kids to be in school, like every other parent here, but I want less, a little bit less screen time and more textbooks and packets.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
I'll open up Sarah now.
Okay, thanks.
Wait, can I ask Tiffany a question? Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
What, I'm just wondering what grades your kids are in?
Seventh. They're coming in a seventh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sarah?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so I had a question before I made a statement. Originally, the chat was open where we could send you a comment to the panelists, but then that got closed. Was that intended?
I
Right now, there's no ability for me or anybody, as far as I know, for anybody else to put something in chat at all.
I'm seeing chat, I'm seeing chat on there.
I believe the idea was that we wanted everyone to speak.
Sarah, look at
My screen says the host has labeled attendee chat. I just wondered if that was something you wanted or not.
This is a discussion forum. Let's discuss.
Yeah, because originally it was open, so I wasn't sure if that was
Yeah, I have a feeling that's probably what was turned off.
Okay, well, that was my, okay, that was my question. I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and I quoted, you know, from a teacher who had gone through this. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the issues that as a high school teacher, different than an elementary teacher, that we will be facing in the hybrid model. And I think as a teacher, when you put together your idea of how your class is going to run with all of the restrictions and the rules and regulations that we would be forced to follow, it makes it very difficult to think about how that would work for creating a community, for creating a class that would work, where you'd be able to instruct well in that time. For example, I was wearing a mask the other day, and I had to project just for a couple of minutes, you know, across an area. And it just became very burdensome just to have to do that. For example, that's just one thing. So as a teacher, you start scaffolding and thinking, how is that going to be for an hour? Or in the hybrid model, we would actually be in class for much longer than that. And so I believe we put 80 minutes in there. And that seems very burdensome. And then your connection with the class seems to be so limited because of no ability to see facial expressions, that that takes away a huge part of building community. We, my concern that I didn't bring up a couple of weeks ago, but for me, it's very personal, is all the cleaning agents that are going to be necessary in the classroom, and what that could do to lungs or throats or things like that. I was also wearing a mask in an area where people, there was some smoke in the air, and what I noticed was that smoke got caught in the mask. And I'm breathing that, and I'm thinking, what's that going to be like in the classroom if chemicals are around and it gets caught in the mask? So when we were putting all of these ideas of how to do hybrid together in the subcommittees, which I think we did as best a job as we could possibly do, given all the rules, when I was trying to picture what that would look like, I was very discouraged in terms of what my class could be. And the healthcare, the health scare that it gave myself was more about the chemicals than anything else. And I don't know that there's answers to that. So I would like the board to try to, as you're trying to piece together, what would a class look like in the hybrid model, to consider all those different angles that a teacher would have to think about, like also movement in the classroom. Where would a teacher walk? We talked about that in the subcommittees. If you don't want us to be near the students, then, well, what route would we be using in the classroom to get to and fro? And all of a sudden, you become, you feel so limited that it becomes not seeming worth it anymore. So those were some of my concerns. And I'm trying to get everything out for you, so I know it's a lot, but I'm just trying to tell, give you sort of a plate full of what's been on our minds when we think about what that would be like. And I don't know if you have any questions for me, but those were some of the ideas.
So am I to understand, Sarah, that your conclusion is there is no hybrid model that you would be comfortable with working in?
Sheldon, you have some weird feedback.
Sorry.
I heard your question. That's true, and a lot of that, for me personally, has to do with the issue of the chemicals and what would need to be used for cleaning. But if you're talking about the issue of delivering instruction, I think it would make it so limiting. And so, to me, it becomes looking like a prison for the students because we'd have to be constantly watching them, the masks, where you're walking, where you're moving or not moving. You can't do groups in the classroom setting that you can do in the Zoom setting. You can put them in breakout rooms, for example. You can't put people together. Now, you can put them together electronically. You can say, okay, everybody in person, we're going onto a Zoom now. But, you know, that just seems very unusual and disconnected in a weird way, because you're supposed to be in the classroom connecting. That's the whole point of putting people together. Another issue that has been very much on my mind is as I'm reading reports of schools that have tried any form of this, pretty quickly, somebody ends up getting testing positive, and then there's a whole quarantine section. So if you're quarantined, but you're not sick, and you're trying to teach, how disruptive is that for the teacher who's trying to figure out, do I need substitutes? How do I work with them? How do the subs get into the class? Am I being zoomed in on an Apple TV? These are all these questions that we start thinking about that ultimately, so at what point do you say it's not worth it anymore? At what point do you say we can do this in distance learning for sure? And I know it's not optimal, versus just trying to get people back in the classroom?
Thank you, Sarah. Sarah?
Yeah, I just have a question. Your picture has all of the desks. So I was wondering, that was desks from your classroom, and then are those desks going to work? I mean, would you be able to use them in a different configuration? Or are you concerned about that?
Yeah, those are my desks. That's what the classroom looked like on March 13th. And so I wanted to give my students I was meeting with this summer for my one class I have for Honors IX, and I was trying to show them, this is what our room would look like. I was told that the intention was for the district to try to remove furniture that was unnecessary. I don't know if that's still the case, but that was my understanding from the meetings we had this summer, that they would try to remove furniture so that it wouldn't be an impediment, or actually, maybe it would reduce cleaning surfaces. So my understanding was that they would make the classrooms work that way as best they could. But as you know, CASA, everything's completely different. All the classrooms are different. I find it, if you think about it, Maddie, and I know you've been in the classroom too, you know, and you think about what that would be like for a teacher to have to be six feet away from the students, they're all six feet away from each other, sitting in a desk, and you're now limited to this sort of one pathway, maybe up at the front of the room, where you could go from your lectern or your board, maybe back to your desk. I don't know what that's going to look like. We talked a lot about the ingress egress issues. How are kids going to get up? And how are they going to leave? And how are they going to come into the classroom? And again, as a teacher, I'm thinking, how much time is this going to chip away from the time I would have in class? So all of those are concerns, and I think that everybody who's maybe not in the classroom on a day-to-day basis would want to think through what that would look like and how much, how much strong instruction you could give to the kids with having to deal with all of that.
Yes, also as a teacher, I appreciate the fact that you like to move around your classroom. You want to make sure kids are working, you want to see what they're doing. So I absolutely understand the problem.
That reminds me of another issue to think about, and it's different for elementary, because they're dealing with, like, everybody bringing their own crayons, let's say. But for secondary, we have things like extra Chromebooks in the classroom. So what happens if somebody forgot a Chromebook? And we talked about this. Well, I can't just now go over and give them an extra Chromebook because things needed to be cleaned. And again, things that are just so basic that we normally do, oh, sure, here, have a Chromebook, you know, here, have an extra book. And suddenly, everything becomes that much more burdensome. So I'm all in favor, by the way, of trying to get us back. I just, again, I just don't know how this is as effective. I know it's hard on parents. I get that, too. I don't know if families are aware that if a cohort is quarantined, that the expectation is that the whole family is quarantined at that point. And I don't know that parents are aware of that either.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much for listening. That was
Who do you want to go to next? Do you want to just go down the list?
Yeah.
Okay. So I got to point a clarification before we open up, because I, we're going to, it's a tricky one, because we haven't been putting time limits on folks, because we really want to hear. But at the same time, we're going to run out of time very quickly. Do we want to put, do you want to try it for me to give people at four minutes of a warning? That we got, they've got to kind of wrap up at least that initial conversation?
I think that would be helpful, because we went four hours last time.
Well, and also, we just want to make sure we hear everyone.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
We just want to make sure we're respectful of folks. And so folks, try to really be concise and have your points already laid out. And so we'll go to Kai.
Thank you for that. And Kai, you are on.
Hi, this is actually Chris McCormick, or Chris Cherry. My son is Kai.
Okay.
He is going to the third grade at Grant. And I was listening during the four-hour meeting last week. And I find it interesting that at the, towards the end of the four hours, it became abundantly clear, as well as said, that hybrid is not going to work, and we're going to end up going from distant to traditional once there's a vaccine. And that was kind of brought up as a statement, I believe, from possibly Phil or someone from the district. And I'm wondering if we're going backwards on that, or if that's still kind of the thought?
No decision has been made except to start in distance learning, and that has been mandated by the governor.
Yeah, that wasn't a statement by the district.
Am I correct within that? Gary?
Yes.
Okay. Kai, does that help?
Yeah, I guess so.
And you still have the microphone. Anything else you want to say?
No, although I do think Sarah made a lot of valid points. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, you are on.
Here I am. Sorry. Hello. Well, you've all heard from me lots. And I just wanted to say that I agree with Sarah, and in the interest of time, because I think most teachers today were signing on to hear that the board gets to a vote and makes a decision to keep us in distance learning for the first semester, or preferably for some period of time. But that was what everyone hoped for, because we need to know how long we're planning. And everything that Sarah said about hybrid model is true. I was on that same distance learning committee all summer. But today, we really hope to hear that you guys would make a decision so that our planning for the next 10 days would include, how long are we staying on distance learning so that we can make valid educational decisions? The hybrid model, I loved the young man last week who said it was the, we call it yo-yo, but he called it whiplash, going into the classroom and then getting quarantined, and then going back in the classroom, and then getting quarantined, and how that just doesn't work. So, you know, I just wanted to say that I was really hoping that this evening, you guys would be making a decision about how long we could stay in distance learning so that we can all finalize our plans. I feel like a lot of teachers are still sitting around saying, well, are we in for two? Are we in for four? Are we in until the state says we're off the watch list? And then what? Is there a sudden sort of, okay, we're off the watch list, so tomorrow, we're doing hybrid? And I just wanted to correct something Gary said about the students being back in in halves. That's not going to work at the high school. We've measured all those classrooms. We've worked on that hybrid model for weeks. And the best we could come up with is a third. So classes of 32 and 33 students at the high school level, and classrooms of limited square footage, you can't put more than a third of the class in at a time, because it's not going to be even. You're never going to be able to split it exactly a third, a third, a third. You know, so if you could do half, you could get 16 kids in a room, but most of the rooms at the high school are not big enough to have 16 students six feet apart. In my own classroom, with the lab desk at the front of the room, I would have to be standing against the wall, literally against the wall, in order for a student to be in a desk in front of my desk. And we would have no egress in or out of the room, because students would have to be sitting in the classroom doorways. So the fire department is not going to like that. And it's just not possible. So you're not talking about students being back in class half the time. You're talking about them being class a third of the time. It's very difficult, from a teacher's point of view, to try and plan a lesson that you're going to repeat three times to get the three-thirds done, and then go on. Sheldon mentioned last week that he was concerned that students are only in for 240 minutes versus 360. And I feel like the hybrid model is even worse than that, that we'll have less time with individual students, because we'll have to be repeating ourselves over and over and over again in order to get the lesson to fit the 10 kids who are in front of you, the 20 who are at home. Then the next day, you do it again. Well, that's a waste for the kids who already had that instruction. And the students who come on the third day have had two days of having to work by themselves, even if we did this little check-in at the beginning of the period, which seems crazy. But those students would have to work alone for two days, and then they would get your attention. And then they're supposed to turn the assignment in the same as the student who came on the first day and then got to work for two days by themselves. So, you know, my preference would be what the first parent said, you know, stay in distance learning. We know how to do it. Keep students safe. We don't have this whiplash effect of in and out, and then go back in a way that we can all teach well, be with students, put them in groups, let them work together. The hybrid thing just doesn't work. But mainly, I wanted to say, I really, really hope by the end of today that the board votes. I understood that this was a meeting, so you could vote. Last Tuesday, it was a study session, so you couldn't vote. And I think that's
This is a study session, too. This is an extension of the last meeting.
Yes.
Can I ask then, when it is you plan to vote? For those of us who are trying to plan lessons?
Our next scheduled board meeting is at the
No, we can't wait till August 18th. Obviously.
Yeah, that's after school starts.
I know, so
And right now, teachers are sitting around going, okay, so if I read in the paper that we're not on the watch list anymore, then tomorrow, we could go hybrid. And why should I
No, you have to, you have to be off the watch list for 14 days.
Right. But who's going to plan like that? I mean, Maddie, you would
I know, I know, I'm just saying that that's the law.
I understand. But I think as long as teachers are hanging on that, as soon as we hear that we're off the watch list, 14 days later, we're going, then why would I plan for a whole semester? Or why would I even plan for a six-week quarter? Why would I make plans if I'm just hanging around, waiting to be told I can go back in the classroom? Which is a different plan than I would do on distance learning. So I really think if we're trying to provide a rigorous, carefully planned curriculum to students and deliver it well, teachers need to know, before next Wednesday, when we're back in the classroom, I mean, there were two issues. One, were we going to add another professional development day, which would be next Wednesday, so the teachers had an extra day to plan? And two, how long are teachers planning for? Because this, oh, let's discuss this. We're going to spend another four hours tonight discussing it, and then we're not going to vote. So I'm sorry, I'm very frustrated by that. I really heard on last week's meeting that today, you would have a meeting and you would vote. Because Sheldon even said, we can't vote, it's a study session, so let's come back next week when we can vote.
Can I just ask something, Lee? Maybe, I know that I'm not going to alleviate your frustration, but the reason for this meeting, we were supposed to get through all of this last week, and we only got through the first question.
Right.
So this is a continuation of that, but let me finish. And what we're trying to do tonight is to figure out, what are the metrics? What do we have to know before we go into, before we make any movement? So it's not just getting off the watch list. It's all the other things that we're going to find out tonight, hopefully, that we can then use to figure out a plan for reopening to, or to make that movement. Does that make sense?
I understand.
Really, to get as much information, discuss as much as we can, so that we don't put you in that situation. So that's one of the things I would say is a metric, is to give teachers enough time to be able to plan for that transition. Would that be fair to say that that's what you're asking of us?
Well, I'm asking that you leave us on distance learning for the first semester. But if you need a metric, then I don't know how you would put X number of days do teachers need to make the transition. I understand that Santa Rosa made a commitment to stay out for nine weeks. As a teacher, that sounds great. Then I know, the first quarter is distance learning, and at that point, we reevaluate. Other schools have said till October 1st, or until whatever, we'll reevaluate at that point. But we have nothing, except whenever we've been 14 days off the watch list, which means every day, you have to look at the news and see what's going on.
And Lee, I appreciate you talking about quarters, because that's what's been on my mind.
Thank you. Well, I think it's time, I think it's also, you said Chris was there. One of the big concerns that Sarah brought up was the whole cleaning situation. In our distance learning committee, we never heard a satisfactory, how are you going to clean every room between classes? I know in many other states, they've tried to put kids together in cohorts at the high school. That really doesn't work, because you don't have kids that are in grade pure, grade-grouped classes, right? My honors chemistry kids are sophomores and juniors, Math 1 and Math 2 and Math 3. I mean, it's this whole mix, so you can't have cohorts at the high school like that. So how are you going to clean every room between every class? Or you're going to say, a third of the high school is the cohort. They're coming on one day. If any one of those kids, 400 children, get sick, all 400 of them are quarantined, because they have all been exposed, either in a hallway, a bathroom, a classroom, somewhere on that campus, those 400 students are one cohort. You can't send a custodial group in to clean each room, and then say to teachers, just walk in and inhale that stuff, it's okay. You can't send a custodial group in to clean each room and then say to teachers, just walk in and inhale that stuff. It's okay. Three times a day, you guys can walk in there and inhale the vaporized viral stuff that they're spraying, right? Which is all electrostatic fogger. I understand how it works. I'm a chemist. But I don't want to inhale that stuff even through a mask. So we haven't heard how the school can handle cleaning and keeping things safe, keeping masks on kids. I mean, I'm going to spend, you know, 20 minutes saying, put your mask back over your nose. I can't get them to keep goggles on during a lab, much less keep a mask over their face. So I just think there are so many things we don't know that that's why teachers are pushing for, stop talking about hybrid. The last parent said the same thing. I thought we already came to this conclusion. Four hours of discussion got us to a conclusion of hybrid doesn't really work. Let's make a commitment for distance learning for the semester.
So I see there's like 18, 19 people with their hands up.
Yeah, I'm done.
Gary said
Thank you. Thank you for your emails as well.
Yes. Okay. Nicole Janelli? Did I say that right? Nicole? She's still muted.
No.
Okay. Yes, we can.
Um, I absolutely agree that we need to make a plan and stick with it. And as a parent, I have a 12th grader at Casa Grande and I'm all for distance learning. Make the plan. Let's stick to it. I think what's important, as much as the classroom time, and if it's being offered via Zoom, that's great, is let's get some social time for these kids. So I'd like to propose a hybrid where they do their schoolwork, say it's 8:30 to 11:30 or 12:00, their classes on Zoom. And then at least on the high school, I've always thought about high school, sorry for the other ages, but maybe, you know, each day of the week, like Monday is freshman, Tuesday is sophomore, et cetera. From 1:00 to 3:00, there is an open gym on the field where the first 200 kids that sign up can come. They have to wear masks. They get a temperature check. It's run by boosters or PTA as far as, you know, so teachers can be doing their office hours or doing what they need to do. I think we need to look at a way to bring social activities in a safe way while the weather is nice. We have from now until November and focus on that and make the commitment. Let these teachers plan their curriculum online. I think it's ridiculous that we're going back and forth. The kids already believe it's online. They've accepted it. But let's get some of the social back. What can we do to get these guys, whether it's, I don't know, some, some kind of activities using the campus that's huge, that we can space these kids out on the fields in some kind of field day, right? You know, we've done these things before. Maybe it's once a week, once a month. I don't know, but my vote is to focus on that because that's a big part that they're going to be missing. It's, you know.
Thank you, Nicole. That was a great point. Before we move on, I have a point of order question for Gary in that can we vote tonight? Even though, no? So we're going to have to set up another meeting, maybe tomorrow.
We're going to have to have an item up on a public agenda for at least 72 hours. So 72 hours from now is lit, or 72 hours really from like the end of the meeting is literally the earliest we could ever vote.
So that would be Thursday? No, Friday. Yes?
I apologize if anyone thought this was a meeting where we're doing action items because it was always going to be the continuation. So if anyone else thought that, we apologize for any miscommunication. It was
It's also, it's like, I love the idea about an open masked gym on the field. So this, that's what part of this meeting is, is getting those kinds of ideas so that we can progress. Okay. PD photo. This person is still muted.
Hear me?
PD photo, you're unmuted.
I'm Beth. Hi.
Hi. What's your name?
My name is Beth.
Thank you.
And my daughter goes to Cherry Valley, so I've gotten a little taste of distance learning so far. Pretty, it's been going pretty well. My daughter has formed a, a group with two other families. So we have three kids and we're rotating days. So they're getting some social time. But we've also hired a tutor for the afternoon. It would be really hard now that we finally get this kind of structured down, the kids are getting used to it. It would be really hard to kind of jump back into a classroom setting. Then only to have, you know, someone test positive. And with the, you know, testing turnaround time being very much linked to what else is happening in the nation because a lot of these links are getting backed, backed up, not because of cases in California, but cases in other states. I just don't think that we can really plan on, especially moving into cold and flu season. Somebody gets a fever, it could be because they have an ear infection, yet everybody gets quarantined and then it's not COVID or is COVID. So I think that we should definitely stick with distance learning, but I do think that there are opportunities to have more social time, like like I can think of having kids out on the, you know, having hula hoops out, spread out on the field and the, the kindergartners and first graders are sitting in the hula hoops and, you know, the teacher can talk. I mean, just having some face to face time for the younger ones especially, I think would be really helpful. They really miss their friends. They really depend on having that connection. I mean, all kids do, but with those younger children, having that connection with your teacher is just so important. And my daughter really wants to do her work to please her teacher. And without that, it's, I feel like that's been what's missing so far with distance learning. And one last thing, you know, I've heard this thrown out there. I think it's a great idea. The high school classroom or the high schools are huge campuses. Those classrooms would be a great place for kids that really either don't have any options at home for parents or special needs students. And there, I think there are kids that need to be prioritized. I don't think my daughter is one of them, but I think that if you have special needs and you really need that one on one or you need more attention, that maybe that extra space in those classrooms could be used for that. And then it wouldn't require as much cleaning. So anyway.
Thank you. Erin? Manu?
Hello.
Please correct me if I say your name wrong.
Oh, there we go. Now I'm back. Mano, that's great. Thank you. So I'm a South County speech and language pathologist. I work with students with a wide variety of needs and we definitely know how important it is to have our kids back in school. But I wanted to say that, you know, of course, the safety of our students and our teaching staff comes first and we have so many different needs than kind of the general public as far as toileting and, and one on one support and hand over hand. And, you know, above all else, it's also very important to keep the consistency for our students as far as teaching. And I think the best way to do this for our students with autism and developmental delays is to have our students, both our teachers and our students would benefit greatly for, from a decision to stay distance learning for a longer period of time. And really let our professionals use their skills and expertise to teach these students in creative ways. It's, it's something that we're already very good at. We're already really, really good at adapting our curriculum and changing for the individual needs of our students and allowing us the time and flexibility to do this with distance learning would actually benefit everyone involved, I think, at this time due to the safety concerns. We have some really amazing staff who are working in really creative ways to meet the needs of our students. As far as, you know, the question and considerations for the transition into hybrid or coming back to campus, I think we need to develop a rapport with our classes first and really determine the needs to go back to campus. Delaying the return would give us that time. Teachers know best how to support their class and not the county health officials. So I think as you're considering when to come back, consulting with teachers first is really the best way to do that because we're the ones who are going to know exactly what our students need, especially in special classes like ours.
Erin, we've been hearing from special ed families who have a lot of concerns about how their children will be served under distance learning. And I'm hearing from you and I've heard from some other special ed teachers that they feel confident that you can do this well through distance morality. Can you give us a little bit of insight on how that might happen?
Definitely. You know, we're, we're just now coming back from this summer and we are, I work with some absolutely amazing teachers. And as we've heard from the general education teachers, the spring, when we were distance learning, was in a lot of ways crisis teaching. And we were jumping into a distance learning platform that was never designed for special needs students. Now, many, many, many of us have spent hours in trainings and forums and research and, you know, social media platforms, learning how to use green screens and provide flipboards and all sorts of amazing, amazing adaptive tools that we'll be able to use in a distance platform that we just did not have access to or know about in the spring. So similar to general education teachers, I think we're looking at a completely different program this fall than we saw in the spring. And the families haven't been exposed to that yet. But I encourage them to talk with their teachers, not just the administrators. Because the teachers are going to know what their programs are and it's different for every single classroom. South County Consortium, every single classroom, every single student has different needs, but that's the beauty of our teachers. We're, we're trained to do that. And I've heard some absolutely amazing ideas and plans for, for this coming fall. And I'm, I'm confident that even the students where I know this isn't, this isn't what we want. And from a parent's standpoint and a student and a teacher's standpoint, I do think that with collaboration, we can, we can meet the needs and keep our students and staff safe. And the longer we have to really implement and be given a chance to do that, the better.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Sheldon, do you have another question? Okay. Molly Dickens?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So I have a TK student and a first grader. And I want to point out that we've mostly hearing from older age groups, but I want to speak about the younger ones. And I do want to say that I absolutely appreciate the work that has gone into distance learning 2.0 and I look forward to seeing how it will go. But I want to point out that the model does not really address some of the biggest concerns that were raised by parents. For parents of younger kids, a lot of what they spoke about is they're legitimately worried that our kids are not going to be learning if we're in distance learning for an extended period of time. And if they're not learning, they're not learning. And if they're not learning, then you're effectively saying that education is not important for this age group. And the reason that I really want to drive this home is that we, we have to understand that there isn't a one size fits all model. And I want to make sure that when it comes down to decision, the younger kids, especially the kids under the age of 10, I would like them to be considered differently than the older children. And talking again about that age group, I, I'm, I am worried that we might lean heavily towards distance and even for this age group. And whatever decisions made, when there is a decision to make, I want to point out that there, there are two sides to this risk. I appreciate that we are in this impossible risk, risk situation. And we can't focus on mitigating the health risk of coronavirus at the expense of the other side of the risk, which is learning loss and mental health and developmental issues. And of course, equity, that was thoroughly discussed in the last meeting. And so my point that I want to bring up for this age group is that when state regulations are lifted, we really do owe it to these children to take into consideration a potential long-term risk of not having them in the classroom. And I appreciate that the classroom will be different and I appreciate that the hybrid model could be a logistical nightmare. But we have to consider that if kids are taken out of the classroom altogether, they will most likely suffer from this. There have already been studies to show mental health issues of keeping kids out of the classroom. And there are decades of research in the future that will show long-term impacts of keeping these kids out of the classroom, even for a semester. Someone pointed out in the last call that we are part of an experiment and I want to point out that we're already part of an experiment. We're just not going to know the results of it for decades. And the other thing is that the research that we do have today, the research, not the anecdotal evidence, the research shows that children under the age of 10 are not catching, they're not as likely to catch and not as likely to spread the virus as other ages. And when we talk about distance learning for the sake of health, I want everyone to consider that mental health and brain development is still health. And for this reason, pediatricians have been advocating for getting young kids back into the classroom because of this risk, risk assessment for this age group. And yes, I know scientific evidence, and I'm a scientist. It's evolving and there's more coming out. But we do know ways to protect from spread. And I'm sure you all have that in place when we think about hybrid and with masks and distance and hygiene and airflow and limiting time in close proximity and cleaning and all these things. And for clarification from someone who said that kids walking by each other six feet apart is a logistical nightmare itself, that's six feet apart without a mask on. Kids can wear masks. My preschooler can wear a mask for the entire day. And she's going to TK and I trust her to wear a mask for the entire day. The other thing that I want to point out is I am worried that the, the fear from few could drive the decision for many. And I want to just, I have to go there, but I know what it's like to feel like my children or my friends who are teachers are not safe in school. I'm an alumni of Marjorie Stone Douglas High School and the year after the Parkland shooting, I still sent my daughter to kindergarten into the classroom because I didn't want to let the fear and anecdotal evidence and concern about, I, I didn't want the fear to drive how she would learn that year. And I don't want the fear and the anecdotal evidence concern about logistics to drive decisions that could impact these kids. Just, I'm almost done, I swear. I know this is risk, risk, and I know you're making really hard decisions and I appreciate the work that you're putting into it. But I want to just say this again, when we're making decision to switch to hybrid, I want us to be honest about how much the younger kids are actually learning with distance 2.0. If they are not learning at a level that you would accept as an educator, we owe it to them to take into account the high risk of these long-term effects when thinking about the low risk of catching and spreading the virus, especially when case numbers are low enough and when all other parameters in place have given us the go from the state. I really think if the state says we can go into the classroom, we owe it to ourselves to find a way to get these younger kids back into the classroom. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Molly. That was excellent. Emmy Eichner?
Hello, everyone. My name is Emmy and I am coming to this conversation as a teacher and as a parent. So I'm really only going to talk on the parent side of it. I have a kid who is super involved in the FFA program in Petaluma High and he is involved in classes that require hands-on learning. He's going to be in a welding class. You cannot tell me that he is going to learn how to weld via Zoom. It's not practical. It's not going to happen. And I have yet to hear any plan that says how these ag kids are going to get their needs met. They're doing hands-on activities. They need to be in some kind of small consortium, you know, 10 to 12 kids where they can actually learn the skills that I'm sending my kid to Petaluma High for. I took him out of Santa Rosa City Schools to send him to Petaluma High for this program. I need answers on that front. I also need answers of how his 504 is going to be met via distance learning. I know as a teacher that what we did in this, in the spring was not distance learning. His 504 did not get met. That's not okay. And you need to start answering the questions that say, how are these ag kids going to get their needs met? That their college courses or their, their academic requirements are being met with. He's taking ag science classes to satisfy science requirements. And if he's not learning the skills that he needs, what, how, how are their needs being met? It's, it's a little different than a regular English or math class where you can do distance learning really, really easily. I did it with middle school. I get that it's feasible. It's not feasible with hands-on programs like floor culture, working in the greenhouse, welding. I am just curious how those kids are going to have their needs met.
Thank you, Emmy. Mrs. Smith?
Ms., actually, but I'll take it. I really need to reiterate that hybrid learning is a very, very bad idea. The initial idea of hybrid learning started a few months ago before we realized how bad this is going to be and how invisible it is with the children. Recent research just published on July 30th in Journal of American Medicine Pediatrics shows children can have a viral load 10 to 100 times that greater than that of an adult and still be asymptomatic. There is no safe way to do hybrid learning with students present on campus. Not if we want to value not only the safety of the student, but the safety of every adult on that campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Wilson?
Give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Right, thank you. First, I'll apologize. I've not attended any of the previous discussions, so I apologize if any of what we talk about has already been covered. But I wanted to echo what Molly Dickens said a few speakers ago with regards to at least the first half of this discussion or the first significant amount of this discussion seems to have focused on high school or, or older kids. I'm a parent of two younger kids and have exactly the same view that she does, which is my biggest concern is, you know, we have, we have two working parents in this house who are trying desperately to keep up with that as well as trying to instruct a second grader who is otherwise not particularly self-motivated. And it is extremely hard for us to stand by and watch him not making the progress that we know he did, you know, when he was in class, because we're just not able to give that to him. And even if one of us wasn't working, we're not trained as educators. The Zooms and all that kind of stuff are fantastic. They're, they're really helping. But, you know, just again, to echo what Molly said, I think there's more than one way to slice this. I don't think it's a one-size-fits-all solution. It's been very interesting to hear the comments from the various teachers. Again, particularly with the high school teachers talking about how if they go hybrid and then they have to go back for your remote and et cetera, et cetera. That is a very interesting and valid concern. Again, to Molly's point, I think the risk for younger kids who aren't able to self-sustain the way an older kid does, the, the risk is greater, I think, for them in, in being home 100% of the time. I also want to also echo the comments about socialization, which I think cannot be underestimated here as well. You know, somebody talked about the weather. We have a lot of schools around Petaluma. My, my child goes to Cherry Valley. The older of my children goes to Cherry Valley. There is a significant amount of outside space there. Can we take advantage of that? Or some portion of the year? Can we, can we change things up between when the weather is known, we know the weather's going to be dry and then it starts raining? Can we, can we plan for that? Can we, can we ask all of the parents? You know, there may be some parents who say, I want my kid in homeschooling. Even, even in second grade, I want my kid, not homeschooling, distance learning. I want my kid in distance learning. And others who say, you know what, I'm ready for my kid to be in the class, even if it's in an alternative model. And can we start to split the, you know, the groups up somehow in a way that is then appropriate for that individual kid? My kid is not thriving in distance learning. And, and that's, I mean, again, echoing what Molly Dickens said, I'm more concerned about the long-term risk of that than I am about the shorter term. High risk or low risk of, you know, any infection. Of course, I'm, I don't want to diminish completely the, the risk of infection. But again, to Molly's point, I think we need to consider the, the counter risk for that particular age group in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have Carla.
Hi, thank you. So I'm kind of caught in the middle between this as much as my kids want to go back to school and would like a hybrid model and so would I. I do believe that there has to be some sort of assurance and a process for, you know, contact tracing so that if someone gets sick, whether it's staff or faculty or a child, we're going to know, we're pretty much going to know who was all affected and this has to go into quarantine and that sort of thing. Also, that process for cleaning and all of those chemicals. One of my children has an asthma condition. She can't wear her mask all day long. So what about those children? Both my children have, I have 504 or an IEP. And they have different needs as one of our special education teachers just mentioned and a parent than, than the rest of the kids do. We had an ag parent just talk about all of those courses that she signed up for. My, my daughter will not be doing drama. My son will, you know, not be going to Wildlife Museum. And those are all things that we need to consider because it's not a cookie cutter situation. And I do agree, we're not ready to go back to the classroom anytime soon. And I do agree, we need to know as parents and teachers how long we're going to be into distance learning so that we can prepare our kids. My kids with ADHD, they absolutely have to have some, as much structure as possible. And giving them that whiplash of going in and out of the classroom is going to be extremely detrimental for them. They also miss their friends. So that idea of using our campus space is fantastic, even if it's just one day a week and, you know, I don't know what the answers are, but I do know that all, this one answer is not going to fit everyone. And you probably need to be studying, what are we going to do for our special ed kids? What are we going to do for our elementary school kids? What are we doing for our kids that are in trade programs? What are we going to give those kids that are missing out on classes that they can't take while distance learning? You know, what's going to replace that? Not just from fulfilling their requirements perspective, but also from what are they, they going to gain? What are, what are their alternatives that they'll still be happy to do and thrive in? That's all.
Thank you, Carla. Fay Martin?
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
So I'm going to echo some of the recent thoughts by Molly and Matt and others regarding, I think, I forget who said this, but this is not a one-size-fits-all decision. And I'm a little bit concerned that the school board seems to feel that it's necessary to make a decision for everyone. I'm wondering, my work, so I work for BioMarin down in Nevada, and we have like 5,000 world, worldwide employees. And one of the ways that BioMarin is implementing return to work is to survey everyone. And I'm wondering if we could basically survey the parents and the teachers to find out, do you feel that you're at risk? Do you want to return to school? Do you want to continue with homeschooling? And if we get a number of the teachers who want to return to the being in school along with, you know, a certain number of parents who want their kids to return to school, if we can match those up, why can't we make that happen? Match those numbers up, why can't we make that happen for those that really need those extra services? And the social time and perhaps teachers who have young kids want their kids to be in school. And so they would be willing to teach. Why can't we make it on a voluntary basis that the teachers and the parents decide what's right for their family and whether they feel they're at risk or not, and whether they can afford to have their children return to the classroom and take on that risk. And just also want to point out that we're new to Petaluma. We moved here in October and my daughter is now entering freshman year at Costa Grande. And she knows almost no one. So this whole COVID-19 thing hit right at, you know, pretty much right after we moved here. She had made a couple of tentative friends and now she's completely isolated, no social, nothing. And if you guys can't do the survey, which I think would be easy enough to implement through Survey Monkey system-wide, at least, at the very least, please do not take these social risks lightly because I think the law, and I'm a scientist too. Well, obviously working for BioMarin, but you know, it's, it's not that I'm downplaying the risk of COVID-19, but honestly, and I'm even a high-risk person myself, I would rather send her back to school because I feel that the, the risk from the lack of socialization for her outweighs the risk to me of COVID-19. So please consider the social risks as well.
Thank you. Okay, SJSROFS?
Then mute, yeah. It's Noreen Ringline. That's a weekend church event. So I, I gave 12 questions to the board. I sent them to Molly Nagle. I haven't even acknowledged the questions. There's been no response. I'm still, with all the parents I serve in, in Petaluma, there's just a lack of information about the ability to augment instruction, to make it meaningful. Parents are doing what everybody else is, jumping to homeschooling, to unschooling, to nexus, to kava because they feel frankly that online charters who've been doing it for years have more ability to do what wasn't done for them potentially in the spring. And it's sad because these kids did have connections with teachers. Face relational learning, that children with autism, ADHD, emotional disturbance that they need is relational learning. They have to get to know their teacher. There has to be a level of trust. At the same time, the parents I'm, I'm hearing from daily, I was woken up at 7:00 AM and I barely got off the phone to do this, is emotional toll of this. And, and parents want to know things like, how many nurses does the district have? How many custodians? Because we only had one and he was there in the morning, but we never saw him all day. So they're asking very tangential, I mean, specific things about what steps the district has taken to clean, to care for the health, and then the, the social emotional counseling piece. I have parents whose kids already had a tendency towards OCD and not feeling safe just going to school. Quite aside from now having to have anxiety about, am I going to catch this horrible virus? Now, I don't want to be stereotypical about OCD. It's not always about germs. It's sometimes about safety and children who've had trauma. So has the district in fact, for instance, San Francisco has hired 10 new school psychologists. They have a load going in of 600 assessments. They've hired brand new, probably fresh out of school, but they've hired 10 new school psychologists to start doing some version of assessments. They're going to be able to do the, the rating scales and some of the interviews with the parents. They won't be able to do the academic and some of the WIS testing because that would invalidate it. But they're going to, they're starting to do some of that work that got backlog. That doesn't even count for the triennial and the, you know, yearly, annual assessments that have to be done for students. So the piece I'm sharing is all of these questions are flowing out of parents without any guidance, without any response, without anything in writing. When Gary and Jason did that rollout of July 7th and July 16th, there wasn't a mention of specialized kids. And the parents think they feel very kicked to the curb. They feel like they don't, they're floating in this ether of nothingness. And then they're bringing out questions to me and I don't have any of the answers. I'm just a go-between. I, I actually try to create peace and get kids to feel safe and get parents to be happy with the paperwork and, and cross my fingers and hope everything works out. And I know that people are working hard. But the hardness, what you're working with, isn't being shared specifically in writing with the parents with any kind of guidance. And to say to a parent, oh, create, you know, schedule an IEP, it takes 30 days to get an IEP schedule. Everybody's conflicts are going to be crazy with Zoom learning. It's just, it's going to be really hard. I do think that, that between the distance learning and hybrid, that what kids need is structure and consistency. So regardless of which decision has to be made, they need, they need you to be very structured, to be clear about how much more augmented learning they're going to get because they got very dilute services in the spring. And they need to know that that's solid. So whatever you can do to generate a written schedule, augmented learning with their related services to let them know how they can help and tap in. The other piece about counseling is you often have to have a child assessed to need, all these kids need counseling. All of you need counseling. This has been so unprecedented in terms of, of what the impact is and the worries that pop up that every school site needs some like random, able to step into a crisis situation where a child might not either go to school if it's hybrid or be able to stay with Zoom. I'll leave you with one last thing. A parent said to me, you know, putting my son with ADHD at a computer terminal is like putting someone who needs to be on a diet for health, maybe they're prediabetic, in front of a plate of brownies, chocolate cake and candy bars because they can drift off into their love of gaming and a parent can't always be standing there. And so even the mod, I, I agree with the person who said we need textbooks and some off-computer time for these kids. Go back to workbooks, give them skill and drill because there's learning that's involved in there. And the one thing I've said to my parents, I'll say to you guys, is we settled the West with one-room schoolhouses, right? We had a teacher and we had multi-age grades from kindergarten up to eighth grade, right? In the old West, you only got up to about eighth grade learning. And somehow we did it, right? So I do say to my parents, it's not about curriculum. It's about teaching your child how to learn and how to access their learning. But right now, parents need guidance from the district, from special ed, from their resource specialists, from the counselors, from all the related services as to how this is going to play out. Also, parents with jobs have to structure their, their employment and they have to know when they can be there and when they can't be. We're going to have a lot of latchkey kids. We're going to have kids with grandmas. We're going to have kids with daycare situations for essential workers. Because some parents, even if they weren't essential workers, aren't going to be there for the kids. So there's going to be this inequity in terms of who can actually facilitate a child doing Zoom. That's all. Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work. I truly appreciate it.
Victoria McMorra? Victoria, are you there?
Can I click allow to talk for, or it doesn't allow it?
I think I've lost you. I'm going to move on and then hopefully we can get back to Victoria. Derek Donardo?
Hi, thank you so much for the forum. I am coming at this from both the perspective of a parent. My son is going to be a junior at Petaluma High and I'm also a teacher at Redwood High School. And if that is the Liz Chacon that I know from Redwood, hi Liz.
Hey Derek, how are you?
Great. So first of all, I want to say to you guys, you know, down in Marin, we've been dealing with the same, same issues and bless your hearts, you are in a And bless your hearts, you are in a no-win situation, you are absolutely in a no-win situation. So I, my heart goes out to all of you. And frankly, all of us are in no-win situations, there's no good solution to this. My son really, really wants to go back to school, he's, he got into the museum management course at Petaluma High and he was super excited about that. And you know, frankly, he would do better live with live instruction, but. He, he comes to me and he says, dad, look, like the two biggest risk factors of spreading this disease are being in a box. And being there for a prolonged period of time. And so our classrooms are like incubators, I mean, they are the perfect incubators. And he's like, I'm, I'm, there's no way I'm going in that, that's, that's just insane, it's just crazy. And you know, frankly, I agree with him. Yeah, speaking of, of the mask and we're assuming that kids are going to be six feet apart, which frankly, I. I imagine we need to be further apart than that for this not to spread eight or 10 feet. But you know, I ask all of you, how many of you guys have worn a mask straight for 80 minutes? And if you have. Then how did you do it? And what is the probability that someone in our class is going to take off their mask during the period? For how long, what's the probability that half of them will take their mask off during a class for how long? What's the probability that all of them will take their mask off at some point and for how long? So it's, it's just. It's an incubator, it's an incubator. We've dealt down in Marin with all these same issues, I mean, how are you going to deal with substitutes? Who's going to want to come in and substitute for a class? Many of the substitutes are older, for example, so that's a huge problem. The cleaning thing is just a mess. And other people have already spoken about that. One thing that I don't think people realize in the spring, when we were teaching online. And it was incredibly difficult, incredibly difficult, incredibly time-consuming, exhausting. If we go to a hybrid model, then you were asking teachers to continue to teach their students online. And teach in the classroom simultaneously. I just, I don't think that anyone's thought that through. I mean, how crazy exhausting that's going to be for, for our teachers and we're going to burn out in like a month and a half. And I say all this, completely acknowledging everything that Molly and Matt and Fay were talking about. I'm incredibly concerned about the, the learning loss that's, you know, going to happen and, you know, that it's going to put parents in a bad spot, et cetera. So I, I absolutely acknowledge all those, all those issues. But just with the hybrid model, there are so many problems and so many of them are unsolvable. That putting our kids and our teachers and our staff in these areas, it's. It's like we're guinea pigs and we're going to throw our kids in there and we're going to cross our fingers and hope that it works. And we know that it's not going to work for some of them, some of them are going to get sick and, and some of the teachers and everyone are going to get sick. So are we willing to let our children be lab rats? I say no, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is LR, could you introduce yourself? So we know who's talking. LR.
Better move to the next one.
Okay, Tiffany Feltrup.
Hello.
Hi Tiffany.
Hi, so I just wanted to kind of elaborate and ask a few questions. Like what Molly and Matt were saying, I have a daughter who is younger at Grant Elementary. Going into first grade and you know, it's been such a struggle. I know distance learning, the first time around was kind of thrown on upon everybody. But being on Zoom calls the first time around. I feel like there was no education being learned, especially at such a young age and barely getting accustomed to going to school. To then be brought at home and expected to learn all of these things like. Reading and spelling and writing has been problematic and very difficult. So I just had a couple of questions, I don't know if you can answer them. But trying to get the most prepared for going into distance learning, I think it would be super. Effective for parents to be able to know, like some of the others had said earlier on about how long is this going to be? Like if we had a set time saying you are going to be fully distance learning for the first semester. That would help parents out greatly to get a schedule in place. To be able to, you know, have at least a good amount of time knowing that we're going to be distance learning through that entire time. And then also, I feel like we're just have no information about what the school year is going to look like, you know, we don't. Know what a schedule is like, we don't know how we're going to know the new teachers or how they're going to meet the new children. How the first day of school is going to work. You know, how the younger classes, as like my daughter in first grade, kindergarten, second grade, how they're going to split up that time. Because from the video that was back in like the middle of July that was brought out. Saying, you know, it's going to be like Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, two times a day for like two-hour blocks and then Wednesday. One block in the morning. And I just feel like that might be feasible for older kids. But trying to have a six-year-old sit in front of screen time, you know, listening to a teacher talk for that long. Just doesn't seem like that's going to work. I mean, even through the summer, we had a really great teacher who was trying to do like some summer art projects. Like once a week for her kids. And my daughter, you know, the last few times, like, well, is it going to be on Zoom again? And I said, yeah, it is, she was like, no, I don't, I don't even want to do that, you know, she's just, there's not enough interaction, there's not enough. You know, I don't know the right way to put it, she's more of like a hands-on learner and there's just, that's, it's really struggling. And especially for kids, you know, coming into kindergarten this year, first and second grade. Where it's like this core time where they need to learn the fundamentals on reading and writing. And I'm not equipped to learn, you know, teach that. It's been really problematic and I just feel like she's falling so far behind and I know a lot of other parents feel the same way. And you know, it's, it's like, we don't know, I don't know the best way or the best plan of action to try and have. Her, you know, get to where she needs to be this year if we're going to be in distance learning. So that was just kind of my point, so thanks for listening.
Thank you. LR, can we get you unmuted? Yes, you are unmuted. LR.
No.
Okay, I'm going to move on to Lonnie Ward.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lonnie Ward, I have a son who's in, going into second grade at Valley Vista. And I just wanted to bring you a statement from the National PTA. They say, they understand that it is vital to ensure continuity of education. However, this should not outweigh the safety, mental and physical health of students, educators, school employees and families. And I think this is coming from one of the largest child advocacy programs in the nation. And they've put a lot of research into everything, all of their statements that they put out. And that we need to take the health of our children, teachers and staff. Seriously, and that should come first before anything else. We have no idea what the long-term effects of this virus are going to be. And so as a parent, I, I would hope that the schools would choose to stay in a distance learning model. Until there is more science behind all of this. Until we know exactly, you know, how much of an effect this is going to have. Or until there's a vaccine that's available to protect children and staff. Many PCS students have parents who are essential workers. Some of these parents have a lot of direct contact with the public. So asking their kids to return to the school campus will also make our community more vulnerable. To exposure to COVID-19, that will then delay the full return of children to the classroom. That's all I had, thank you.
Thank you Lonnie. Matt Wotech, please correct me if I slaughtered your name. Matt? I can't unmute him.
He is unmuted.
Oh, he is? It doesn't look like it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sure. Matt White, I have a son inbound at Petaluma High for his freshman year. And he's been IEP and. Definitely walked through a couple of hurdles, I guess, since. He came out of Roner Park and, you know, I guess there's a little bit of resilience to it and a little bit of adaptiveness. And that's what I kind of hear from this conversation. I am also returning school, I'm a returning student, I've been at the JC, graduated from there recently and shortly I'll be out of SSU. Both those programs are committed predominantly to. Doing the distance learning for this semester. So when I saw that, I was just wondering, maybe a decision could be made throughout the semester as to whether to open up in spring. And there wouldn't be so much maybe the interruption. Between now and Christmas and then it would just be a decision that would be made, do we do the classroom session or hybrid sessions going into the spring? Just a thought. And then with some of the other dialogue about coming on campus. I think that that is, you know, like some of the ideas of using the space, get out in the field and maybe do lab work for any of the classes. That need outdoor lab work or lab work that can be done within the facility, that maybe there's a lower population on campus, just as a result of. The only students that would be showing up would be lab and special needs. And then the other component is the, the loss of education and as a parent, what can you cover, what can you not cover? I think from the ground up, I've had to figure that out, I'm not a teacher, had to learn how to, you know, what language arts really mattered at what, at what point in time and what mathematical skills mattered. And that was all a big process. What I've found, and he's had growth, is, you know, the reinforcement from like an Alex.com. McGraw-Hill's Connect programs are mastery-based programs, so for the time that the children are not in the classroom. You know, that the textbooks are definitely important. Have a significant role, I believe, in, in learning, I find that even, even now. But I can also say that these evidence-based programs have, can, you know, like Alexia, which was offered by the, the district and I think now Alexia PowerUp. Those programs, I've taken my son who's maybe not classified as dyslexic or illiterate going into fifth grade, but his reading levels, we're sitting at about kindergarten. We're approaching, we're probably within two years of a comprehensive grade level, you know, ability. And he's doing well, I mean, I can give him books and he can read out loud and. And the stuff that is right in that seventh, eighth, ninth grade range, which is great. And I attribute a lot of that not only to the teaching, but outside, we've put in 30,000 minutes into these programs and. You know, one for language arts, we just did Lexia and then the other for math was Alex.com. So I didn't know if that, those things might be just things to consider as support or attributes to, to the curriculum. To help fill in the space and even when I've used the program myself. Just for like calculus prep and all that kind of thing, like the repetition is so clean and so consistent and the, and the, and the system itself is so forgiving. You know, it kind of keeps you, keeps you, keeps you motivated to keep building and wanting more progress and, and so. I don't know, you know, I know, I know it's a tough situation, I, I think there's a lot of things to listen to in the research and I think there's also a lot of tools. That can be used in combination with the distance learning, like Alex, like Alexia. Even the Orton-Gillingham phonics card system, I mean, I think could be. I, I, I'm not sure, maybe something complimentary too, that parents could have in-home or would be part of Zoom sessions or whatnot to help build. Some structure for language learners or whatever the case may be. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Aiden?
Hi.
Hi.
You can hear me? Hi, this is Aiden Gaiden, thank you guys so much, I appreciate all of your time, especially the school board, I know you're volunteers and wow, these meetings are long. I have a few, I hope you're all going to have a socially-distanced drink after this. I have a few things I'd like to bring up, I missed the last meeting, I do have serious concerns about the inequities. We are aware in this county already that there is some seriously educational achievement gap. And I think that that is only going to grow during this process, so I understand completely, this is out of your hands, Newsom has already said that schools are to be closed. But I do think as a board, you should be prioritizing those kids who are at risk, who are in situations that they will fall through the cracks. And really think about as a district, how are you going to get some funding to support those kids as this progresses? I think it's essential and something you guys should be planning for right now, not just saying there's inequities, but really acting on those inequities and working for them. Many kids have already settled into their pods and they're going to be hiring tutors and they're going to be having their piano lessons and their Spanish lessons and all those kids will be just fine through this. They will cope, there's nothing we can do, we're in a situation where we just have to write, make the most of it and go forward. But I do think that as a board and as a district, what you do is going to really prove to our community. How effective you are when you really tackle the big problems head-on and those problems are about inequities. My second point is that I have three kids, three different elementary, junior high and high school, so. I have, I'm facing the three and I'm a central worker, so I've been working, so has my husband. And I do want to know where teachers will be working from, I think it is really important that teachers are in their classrooms during this. That they're working from their classrooms where they have support for their electronics, they have a teacher community there, they have their classroom set up, they have everything there to teach effectively. There's accountability from school administrators to know the teachers are there and working. They can have, many of us are in our offices, have been working, you know, there is ways to do it, you're wearing your masks when you're in a staff meeting with a group. That it really, I think, is an idea to make sure that the teachers have that support from the district, that they can be in their classrooms and they can start adjusting to what will happen when school goes back in full. I would love to see, I'm not a huge supporter of the hybrid model, I would love to see kids back in school, childcare has been working since March 16th. And they have been doing it effectively, they have dealt with the cleaning, with the, with the, with the actual positive tests of COVID for the cohorts having to shut down. And there's a lot to learn from the childcare industry and what they've done. And but I would actually love to see teachers start bringing in small groups, like the parents who are concerned about their elementary school kids, kindergarteners need to be in school, we know they can't socially distance. We've learned that through our preschool programs, but maybe if the teachers are in their classrooms and as soon as it's okay for them, bring in small groups of kids, that the teachers build relationships with them. Let them, even with the high schools, start moving in different groups that you can get some of the kids back into the programs. Then finally, I just want to say, I do know that there was something that came out yesterday about schools on the watch list being able to apply for waivers, so I'm sure you guys are well aware of that, more so than me, you're the experts. I hope you're looking into that and seeing what that information is about. I know many private schools are already trying to become childcare programs so that they can open their doors and get kids in. And I do want to say that as a district, you know, you announced that you'd spent 40 hours working on this. I, and I'm sure there's been a lot behind the scenes, but in your video in July, you came out and you said, we've done 40, over 40 hours of working on this area of distance learning. While most low-income families work more than 40 hours in a week. And we as parents really just want this distance learning to be effective for all of our kids. We, I, I have so much for respect for teachers, I really do. But I do feel transparency, accountability, having the teachers in their classrooms so they're doing their work and as a district and as a board. And as a district and as a board, I think it's your responsibility to provide these teachers with the resources, with the support, with everything they need to be effective in their jobs. And I hope that the PTAs are stepping up and saying what to, what to classrooms need. I know through the CARES Act, funding came down for PPE supplies, for different funds to modify classrooms. There's also federal funding that will be coming down. So as a district, I hope you are on top of that. You're making sure that you're getting that funding. That funding is going into those teachers' hands or into their classrooms to support them and for what they're doing. But that's my piece. I hope I stayed within your four minutes. I do appreciate you listening to me and I appreciate very much the time that you're giving as members of our community and a public who take these roles and then get to face these awful decisions and situations that you have no control over. So thank you, guys.
Aiden, can you speak just for more clarity on the issue of teachers working from school? I presume you're talking about during distance learning. I want to hear from you. What is the advantage of that?
Well, for me, as a parent for three kids, I think firstly, it's accountability for teachers, but also during the distance learning, and maybe it was crisis learning. But, you know, many of us in Petaluma aren't living in big homes with a separate office where we can set up a whiteboard, we can set up information for our kids. You know, my kids had teachers who may have had kids running around to the back as they were doing distance learning or crisis learning. I think having teachers in their place of work and giving them all of the right supports, they have the technology supports. They also have teachers around them so that they can discuss and they can work together as a group as their, you know, if you've got two fourth-grade teachers, wouldn't it be good if they could actually work together a little bit onsite, in person, with their masks six feet away? There's no, there's no safety risk for a teacher being in a classroom when the kids aren't there. You know, they just, they go into their classroom, they do their, their, their work and then they can leave. And then the kids are getting used to seeing their teacher in that environment and in that setting where the kids expect them to be. Not sitting out in the back garden, not sitting in a small closet trying to do their Zoom classes, but actually, and teachers have time to plan. They also have time to set up their classrooms and get ready for what's going to happen in the future. It's, it, it, teachers are professionals and their place of work is their classroom.
Thank you. Sheldon, did you get your question answered?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jamie Lynn Davis.
Hi. First of all, thank you to all the teachers. And if they do go to a hybrid model, I hope the teachers get hazard pay during this time. I know that's probably not an option, but I would support that. But I'm not only the, the parent of a child who's entering first grade at Grant, but I've also been teaching entirely online at the university level for about 10 years. And I know that it's not ideal, as everyone has said, but for, for our children to learn entirely online. But school is, although it might be one of the main sources of socialization, it's not the only one. And I hear a lot of arguments about how they're losing out on socialization. Sorry, I have a little one too, as you can hear.
That's okay.
And I, I trust that parents can actually adapt to, to finding other sources of socialization so we can keep everyone healthy and safe. Not just our kids, but our teachers. And I've heard, I don't know what percentage of this conversation, if it's an actual representative sample of what the Petaluma community thinks, but it sounds like most parents and most teachers are not advocates of hybrid, and I completely agree on that. And I think that all the time that is, has been spent discussing to do hybrid or not to do hybrid could be, have, could be better spent going all in on, on distance learning. And that as someone who has been teaching in, in distance learning for, for such a long time, I can tell you, I have formed amazing relationships. My students have created fantastic communities and cohorts. And I really trust our excellent teachers that they can find ways to do that, if given the proper resources, to do that. And so the question should be, so the, for those who would fall through the cracks, the welders and the special ed students and the special groups, let's, let's, let's solve that issue and figure out how to accommodate them. But the majority of the teachers should know with clarity already by this point, I know you guys are doing your best, but it takes quite some time and planning to make an effective, to, to, to convert a course to an online course or classroom time to, to online. And they need to know, and they need to have a deadline, they need to know for a set period of time, like they have all been saying. And as a, as a parent, I think we, most of us want that for the teachers. And I, I, I'm hearing that from the teachers that they need that. I really want to support them. I also just wanted to throw this idea out there that in some cases, when you have teachers with areas of specialization, I know this is probably more for high school than elementary, but, but who, who are the truly outstanding language arts teachers in California? Or the math teacher in California, what are they doing? Get their model online curriculum, give it to our teachers here and have them adapt it to their own learning style and their own thing. You don't necessarily have to keep reinventing, reinventing the wheel 1,000 times over. You can leverage the amazing resources that we already have. That's all. Thank you for all you're doing. We really appreciate you.
Thank you, Jamie. Our next person is Jess. Jess, could you state your last name, please? Jess, are you there?
Yeah, it's Jessica Sutherland. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us, first of all. We, you know, I appreciate just this amount of time you guys are spending. I, I was under the impression all summer that a lot of these issues were already being discussed, and so I'm late to the game about 10 days before school starts. But I wanted to, we are a family with, I'm sorry, I am commuting because I work out of the home. I am, we are a family of four kids in the PCS system. A high schooler, a junior high and two grammar school kids. One is going from TK to K. And I really wanted to stress that it's somewhat frightening to think that my kindergartner's education is going to be sort of decided by what the standards might be for my high school student. My high school student is definitely capable of, you know, managing the online Zoom, maybe even being a latchkey for a while. But my K was running from Zoom. I think you've heard this from a lot of parents, hiding from it during TK. He, you know, it was very stressful to get him to participate. I, you know, my husband is an essential worker and I need to be working either at home or at work. And so one thing I just, I, I haven't heard it and I'm sure it's been stressed, is that who is watching our children? I know that for a lot of families, there is someone home. And I hear that there's an option at the YMCA. I'm not sure why YMCA is, is an option, but school is not. Since YMCA is on campus. And so I would, you know, I've heard some information that some like 40,000 kids have been in YMCA over the summer in our nation and that there wasn't an incident of COVID. So I would just stress to look at some of the models that have happened in the childcare industry, like one of the other speakers recommended, and to also just be open to returning the younger children as soon as possible, as obviously as soon as it is safe. Because the, this, this sort of stress and the, quite frankly, I don't know how many more packets to put in front of my, my five-year-old and, and force him to do. And, and in our house, it's probably going to be a lot of childcare coming in and out. I don't, I don't know what else we are going to do. And so I don't know if that mitigates exposure for anybody really, whether they're going to school or, or having a lot of childcare coming in and out. So I really just wanted to be the voice of somebody who hopes that the board remains open to looking at the younger children returning when possible, even if it is a hybrid model. And also, you know, I, I can't speak from being a family member of somebody who has special needs, but I, there just seems to be like a triage that needs to happen with families that need to return and, and kids that have special issues. And of course, safety is, is on the top of my mind, but to remain open to, you know, not rubber stamping like distance learning forever for every child from five to 18. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Shannon Peterson? Shannon, are you there?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. And so I spoke last time. I just wanted to speak again for this moment because it kind of pertains to me as well as a parent and as a teacher. And I have young kids. I have a daughter going into kindergarten. I have a son going into second grade. And I got the news from my daughter's pediatrician midsummer telling me that it was dangerous for her to go back to school because she has asthma. And I always knew this. I always knew she had asthma, but I kind of thought, well, she's a kid. She doesn't get it. She's a kid. She doesn't get it. And he said, it's a bad idea for her to go back. And I said, okay, well, I'm a teacher. My son's going into second grade. And he's like, you have to not go back as well to protect her. And it shook our world. It really shook our world that that was the decision that then we are faced with, to protect my five-year-old daughter, to make sure that she doesn't get this. And I understand these parents of these young kids. We don't know. We've been sheltering our kids. We don't know all the statistics yet. And for him to say such a strong message to me that she can't go back and you shouldn't either. I also wanted to talk about a couple of things. The socialization part, yes, is super important. My son is going into second grade and I don't know if any of his teachers are on here now, but if you know my son, he's super social. And he's so happy at home. He loves doing Zoom meetings with his friends and seeing them, like it's, you know, I know that there's that piece missing, but they're so resilient and they will get through this, I promise. And as far as the education loss as a teacher, I teach seventh and eighth grade science. I promise all the parents, the entire community, that we will make sure that your kids catch up. I promise. There will be a socialization aspect that's lost. There's going to be an education part that we just can't reach during distance learning. But I promise you, next year, the year after, we will make sure everybody gets caught up. The impact, the emotional impact on these kids, losing a relative, losing a teacher, losing a friend is so much greater than losing out on some socialization this year, losing out on some education this year. I've seen it happen as a teacher and I, I, I wouldn't want that for anybody. I just wanted to speak as a, as a parent, as a teacher, and I thank you all for your time. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Shannon. I, I just want to say that we're, we're almost two hours in. I will not be calling on people that have already spoke because I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to speak.
So a question is just a point of clarification. So there, the question was really a two-part question. The first part of the question, the second part of the question, kind of pros and cons, we've heard a lot of. It's the first part of the question that we haven't. I want to remind everyone that has not been following the board, the board set a resolution very clearly at our regular board meeting in July regarding this particular issue of the instructional method for this school year. We were very clear on that. And it says, I'm just going to read an excerpt for folks. Therefore, be it resolved that the governing board of Petaluma City Schools has determined that at this time, in-person direct instruction cannot be provided in compliance with the Sonoma County roadmap to reopening schools. And then it goes on to say, be it further resolved that the governing board of Petaluma City Schools has determined that in-person direct instruction will be offered as an available instructional model when specific health indicators support a safe reopening of in-person instruction. Okay? It's not regardless, not, not specific to whether a waiver is available or not. It's when there are specific indicators that the board feels it's safe to reopen schools. And then another discussion about what reopening looks like. And so, so the question for today was about what are some of the things that the board, what are some of the metrics? Or what the question specifically says is what's the evaluation criteria that should be used for determining when to go out of distance learning into hybrid? And I don't think that's really been discussed. So I'm wondering, does the board want to hear from folks that, that want to respond to that question?
I think I have heard, I haven't heard it expressed as criteria of evaluation, you know, for coming back. But what I have heard from the folks online is the conditions that have to be fulfilled for, for hybrid to be viable to them. And these are some of the things that I've heard, space, you know, physical space, time to prepare, this is speaking for our teachers, cleaning capacity of our schools, flexibility, not one size fits all, stronger communications and more literal communications, structure and consistency, I'm hearing that from all sides, masks and hazard pay. Things that I've heard people say as conditions that need to be met for, for hybrid. And then, and then on top of that, I heard a lot of comments about particularly on the not one size fits all. And we, this is an extension of what we heard last time. And I'm coming back to the idea that the, the thrust of our model of distance learning is going to serve a good chunk of our students and families. But there are going to be, there are families at the, outside of that, the center that we need to accommodate because of their, of their, their own needs and, you know, because of, you know, parents working or lack of privacy at home, bandwidth, all those things.
And I think those are the issues we really need to be dealing with.
Yeah.
So we have 16 folks and growing by the, by the second. What, how do you want to handle this? Because we're, we're what do you, do you want to hear from, do you want to limit, put a tighter time limit? Do you want to care everybody on a? How, how do you want to go about this, folks?
Well, I'd like to hear from people, but I would, I think we need to set a time limit because we're like I, I check off when people talk about the same thing and I have lots of checkmarks. So I don't know how to shape that, but I definitely want to hear from people, but I'd like to hear other, I, I don't know.
I want to hear, but I, I also think that we need to have discussion. If we're going to have discussion amongst ourselves, we need some time to kind of digest and figure out where we all are. The Zoom is, makes it very hard for us to communicate with each other. But I feel like if people want, which is another thing I've heard, a decision speed, communication, transparency around our decisions, I, I don't feel comfortable making decisions without talking with my board members. And I just, we're right now almost at 5:30, which is fine. You know, but
So it might be a recommendation.
Hear from people if they can think of, if it, if it's directly related to those things that need to happen before, before we make any kind of movement from distance learning to, if that, if that helps.
So as a recommendation, what if we, what if we said two minutes? And I see that Annika Nelson is the last one with a raised hand. We'll cap it right there. You probably are going to want Trustee Pawn, who had a previous engagement, to, I think the discussion item, the discussion item really probably should take place at the next board meeting.
And I think we need to set that meeting. So it, we, we, you know, we need 72 hours, which should take us to Friday. I think we need
You would want to set a special meeting.
Well, we need to have a special meeting, but we need to have it as an actionable item on the agenda because we can't keep drawing it out. We need, I mean, what I'm hearing the most of is they want to know what's going on, what we're planning, how we're going to deal with elementary versus secondary. And it's, we really need to set that time so that we can have that discussion and, and act on it.
Okay, so let's hear from the last, let's, let's, let's hear through. Okay, so let's hear from the last, let's hear through, we are stopping at Annika Nelson. And we're going to do, I'm going to hold to two minutes for the rest of the speakers, starting with Erin Byss. I'll open Erin up. You should be open, Erin.
She is. Hello, Erin.
Oh, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Awesome. You know, I really, when Derek spoke a little while ago, a dad named Derek, I was just nodding my head vigorously and you couldn't see me, but you guys, he's right. You guys are in a no-win situation. There's absolutely nothing that you can do.
Erin? We're losing you. Erin?
And certainly, it's not an easy job right now. One parent said that she didn't get what she signed up for. She had a kid who was going to go into a program at one of the high schools, and nobody got what they signed up for. Students haven't gotten what they signed up for. Parents haven't gotten what they've signed up for. Teachers haven't gotten what they signed up for. Board members haven't gotten what they've signed up for. So I just want to kind of name and honor just the uncertainty of all of this, and that it's not going to be perfect. Nobody is going to be happy, you know, at the end of the semester with what's happened, and that's understandable and valid considering what's going on in the broader context. So I'm just kind of hoping that we, as parents, can really keep that broader context in mind. It's easy for us to kind of focus on our families and what's good for us and our specific households, but it's important, I think, to back up and sort of look at things through a wider lens. I'm concerned about teachers. I'm concerned not just about teachers getting sick, but teachers with, you know, mental health struggles and stress from not knowing when they're going to have to be called back into a classroom, which teachers are the ones that have to be called back into a classroom should a hybrid situation, you know, start to be enacted. So I really hope we can take care of our teachers. I share concerns about kids at risk. Really, there are kids who are in homes that are not safe. I really worry about those kids, and I think about them all the time. I'm wondering if there's some creative solution that we might be able to consider that has to do with, you know, an outside sort of place, you know, some people mentioned fields of schools. What can we do to maybe have a safe space for kids who are at risk?
About 20 seconds.
We lost you again, Erin.
That's it.
And I hope regardless, you all take care of yourselves and and you remind yourselves on a daily basis what a good job you're doing and that there is no decision that's not going to be criticized, you know, by some segment of the population. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. I appreciate that. Brent Newell.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Brent Newell. I'm a senior attorney of public justice. I am not appearing on behalf of any client. I'm a parent of a student, and my wife is a teacher for the district. So I'd like to respond to the first question, that is, what should the evaluation criteria be? In addition to the state-based criteria, which you are well aware, there is legislation pending in Congress that would require the Occupational Safety and Health Administration to promulgate emergency temporary standards to protect essential workers. And that would include teachers and classified staff in schools. So an additional criteria for you to consider is the district meeting these important workplace standards. If they are promulgated per central legislation or if OSHA does so under its existing authority, which thus far has refused to do so. I hope that the district really considers the most important asset under your control, which is the human capital in your teachers and classified staff, that they have been asked to go above and beyond during the distance learning segment, to ask them, by many, many parents have asked that this hybrid model or there's a return-to-work model, proceed. But you shouldn't ask your teachers to do that or your classified staff until they are safe. They are certainly not being compensated to put their lives and health on the line or the lives of their family by contracting COVID-19 in the workplace. That is wholly unreasonable, given this situation. So please, in deciding question number one, do not do so until the state standards have been met and any standard set by OSHA in order to protect essential workers, including teachers, have been met for all employees, not some, not part, not half, not all, but all. And that's your duty as board members.
Thank you, Brent. Kimberly Orange.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. So I appreciate Mr. Newell's comments about, you know, attending to the state and federal guidelines for reopening schools and teachers. And I think that one of the metrics that should be used in addition to that is, as things loosen up, so to speak, the willingness of the staff to return to school and maybe some concrete results about what those surveys look like. I know that I am in the minority when it comes to returning to school. I want to go back. I've been back. I've been in my classroom almost every day this summer or in the shop. And I function best when I am at school, doing the business of school and preparing for my students in my curriculum and my relationships with them. That is where I do my best work. So I think that our wishes should also be taken into consideration with regard to that. And now I'm going to put on both my parent and my teacher hat, and as you have your conversation after this meeting, if you could really consider communication with parents and with staff. I know that Jason sent out an email this afternoon. I haven't read it yet, so if I'm mentioning things that are covered in that email, I apologize. But I would like some guidance regarding substitutes. I would like some guidance about the expectation for myself as an employee and what I'm supposed to do with regard to having a substitute in my classroom and how I'm supposed to prepare for my students. I would like some guidance around an independent study program. Last year, I think I filled out 25 independent study contracts where the students came to me for work during their time away from school. Sometimes it was a month away from school, and I had to prepare that work for them and how I'm going to facilitate that since part of that is the student's responsibility to communicate with the teacher about work that they will miss or need to get done while they're out. It is my understanding that those particular documents are legal documents, and so I am not comfortable entering into a legal contract, so to speak, with a student and their family if I don't have any guidance about what that's supposed to look like in this really strange situation for all of us. And then my last question, because I do get a lot of questions from community members that are also parents, and I often don't have the answers because they haven't been communicated to us yet, is will there be a place for the documents and the expectations and the schedules? Or does it already exist on the school district's website for all of these sort of overarching guidance documents for parents and for teachers? Will those things be communicated across the board to everyone? Because I have a parent who contacted me today who is not receiving Parent Square communications, hasn't even been invited to accept her Parent Square account yet. So I asked that she email the district office about that because I have no answer. But even Parent Square has not solved our communication challenges at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dara Michelle.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Hi. I've only been on for a few hours, not the whole thing, and I'm trying to not be repetitive. So forgive me if I've missed something. I'm crossing off my list. I've made lists here to talk about. I just wanted to say, when we do return into any hybrid or in-person learning, the temperature checks that many districts throughout the country are doing, for those who have returned already and those who are upcoming to return, are proving to be ineffective. Sorry, my kids are in the background. They're proving to be ineffective, and I'm actually a case of this. I work for a commercial airline and how to travel. And being an essential worker, I still need to have my temperature taken. I would walk outside just for lunch at the food truck, come back in, and I would have 101.6 degree temperature when I was away on a work trip. And I did not have COVID. My husband's military. We live up here on the military base. Our neighbor tested positive for COVID before moving here recently, and he did not have a temperature any time that he was positive. So I just wanted to throw that out there, as I know a lot of districts are coming up with like a metric system of what to do, Google Form, how to track people's sicknesses and illnesses, and I just wanted to pull out about the temperature check as it's proving ineffective. Also, a lot of parents throughout the districts are giving Tylenol to their kids, medication before sending them to school, so they would not have a temperature. That can have underlying damage to everyone's bodies, specifically the liver. And can we trust the parents to keep the students home if they do have any symptoms, especially when those are crunched between work or school, work or school, those hard decision-making? Now, I know I'm running out of time, so I'm going to move to my second point here, out of the many I wanted to mention. I'm also thinking this might be a good time. I have not looked at Petaluma City Schools budget. We've only been here for a couple of years, so I don't have all the ins and outs of Petaluma City Schools. So please forgive me for the next statement. But I think we need to start thinking creatively, a little bit outside the box, and maybe put ourselves on the map, what we can do and be a model for, oh, my kid's clapping, be a model for other districts, especially maybe up here or throughout California and neighboring states. But maybe we need to look at those students that are at risk and do the RTI model. And the ones that are falling into tier three, maybe work as a district to see which buildings have more space when it comes time to come back because not everybody wants to come back. So starting with that RTI model might be a good way to start to see how many students in Petaluma City Schools or per building should be in the classroom. Whether it's a medical need, whether it's an academic need, this would be a great way to make sure that equity is happening.
I think we're out.
Sounds like somebody is about to say I'm done with my time. Sorry.
Thank you, Dara. Patricia Bowles. Patricia? Patricia? Okay, I'm going to move on while we get Patricia's mic. We unmute Patricia. To Amanda Kirk.
No, Alana is open.
Oh, Alana McDonald, I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me? Sorry. My name is Alana McDonald. I am a graduate of Petaluma City Schools and currently a special education teacher. I feel for my students and their families. This is not easy for anyone. Being in the classroom and having all of our tools handy is what we knew and what we need to be successful. We are like construction workers ripped from their tool pouches and asked to build a house on a computer all while in crisis. Over time, my online teaching has evolved. The first week of distance learning looked drastically different from my last session during extended school year. I spent hours and hours of my own time researching, finding tools, creating and collaborating with other special education teachers all over the world. Has anyone watched The Last Dance on Netflix? Well, it's a great show. I recommend it. Well, but while watching this show with my husband, I had an urge to watch Space Jam, one of my childhood favorite.
I love that movie.
Space Jam released in 1996 was one of the first movies using green screen technologies. It is 2020, and we are now just learning how to utilize this. My point is, technology is amazing, and it has been available, is and has been available. These days, houses are being printed with 3D printers. While in distance learning, it is, it will be important that all students are given access to technology to successfully participate in distance learning. For a child with special needs, such as a nonverbal child, an iPod with a communication app can have the ability to give a child a voice. This could be life-changing. Imagine the possibilities and progress. However, everything will not be over Zoom. I know, for example, my students have short attention spans and need hands-on materials for a healthy delotment. As a special education teachers, we have expertise in flexible innovation and flexibility, innovation, individualizing, modifying, adapting. At this time, I see distance learning as the only safe option. Before any sort of in-person teaching can be done, there are so many daily scenarios that need to be considered and procedures and best practices that need to be established and carried out into staff training. I want to be able to feel confident and being able to keep my students, their families, staff, myself, and my family safe. It is important, and it is impossible to simultaneously plan for two extremes. Let's focus on making distance learning the best it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, I'm going to try to go back to Patricia. She's still muted. Patricia, are you there? Okay, Amanda Kirk.
Hi, it's Mandy. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I'm actually reading a message from Vicky McDo, call her, unmute her earlier, and she wasn't able to get her microphone to work. So this is coming from Vicky, who's one of the full inclusion aides, most recently at Casa Grande High School. She says, "I'm having microphone issues." She says, "I was going to ask if it has been considered how it would look for an earthquake or fire or lockdown drill situation. During a lockdown, protocol is to gather in the corner of the room away from the windows. That will not work with distancing requirements." I'm assuming she's talking about being at school in person. Then I wanted to add to Sheldon's question of what does special ed Zoom look like? How was it successful? Please ask Molly Nagel about the wonderful feedback from Carla Colto's ESY structure. "We were structured, consistent, and made social time. We had fun, and our students learned a lot. How do I know? I know they learned because they were responsible for creating the end-of-week slides about what did you learn this week about..." "I'm willing to share more of how we created weekly social time during office hours and to share more about curriculum structure that was successful for our special education students in the spring and during ESY." Vicky McMorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Janu Orick.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to say, you guys are doing a great job, and yes, it's a lot to take in. I'm surprised the meetings aren't more like based as special ed discussion and elementary discussion and junior high discussion and high school discussions, because a lot of these are like different apples to oranges. But my son has special needs, and I'm not really, I mean, he's not, he's doing fine, but I'd like to see a little more discussion around that separated from all of this because it is such a different world. That's all I ask. Thank you so much. Enjoy.
Thank you, and I agree with you, by the way. Okay. Anilia Faithfull.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Anilia Faithfull. I am a parent at McKinley. My daughter's going into first grade. We've been talking a lot about concerns with kids who have IEPs and younger kids, which, you know, as I said, my daughter's going into first grade, so that's a great concern for me. But I really want to speak up for kids who are English language learners. I haven't heard a lot of talk about that. There's a window for reaching fluency, and it's just not like spoken, not just spoken language, but also with reading. So we have kids who are learning the language while they're also learning the mechanics of reading. I've seen studies that show that children who are not reading at a great level by third grade tend to stay behind for the rest of their schooling. So if we are considering prioritizing which children should be on campus first and receiving in-person education, those children should also be considered as well. So that's all I had to say. Thank you so much.
I want to throw out there when we're saying, what does it look like? What are some of the regulations or stipulations? Of course, we have the state's regulations. I hear the teachers, you know, the teachers come back, not come back, feel comfortable, don't feel comfortable. I hear parents not comfortable. Well, you know what? I want my kids to socialize. And I'm going to throw it out there that at the same time, the classified have now received a letter stating, and I'm going to read this one little section here. It is the expectation that all classified staff report to their work site on the first day of their paid status. So I hear that all these other people were still doing Zooms, and I'm more than willing to work in any capacity via Zoom, and I'm sure a lot of other people are. I know our custodians are still there. So we're putting ourselves in a situation as classified people coming on campuses. How many people? If you're telling casa, all classified people, that's a lot of people coming on that campus. And what safety measures? I understand we'll have masks, we'll have all of that. But there's still a lot of what ifs. I still don't know. I'm going back. Where's my walkie? It's in the same closet with everybody else's, microphones and everything. Golf carts that we use, custodians are using, we're using, we got the whole cross contamination going on. So I'm just trying to picture this in my head. So when do we come back? Well, guess, I guess on Wednesday, we are all going back as classified, but not all teachers and not all students. I just would like to see, you know, what does it look like? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Cherry Johnson?
Hi, my name's Cherry Johnson. I'm a, I'm a special day class teacher at the high school level, but in Marin County. And I have two grandkids that I'm their guardian. One goes to McKinley, he's going to third grade, and one is a South County Consortium student. And I'm basically talking on this because my grandson, who is on this, that goes to South County Consortium, is really wanting to go back to school. He's, he, when he was in school, he was considered the model, he's, he considered himself a model student and was making so much progress. And since we've been, you know, at home, now, he's got some irrational fears about viruses. It's hard to get him out of the house and things like that, but he really wants to go back to school. And I mean, I worry about the safety because I'm, I'm older, so. But he wanted me to call in and tell you that he wants to go back to school. Now, I'm also wondering, have any of you, I have questions actually more than suggestions. Have any of you, did you do any model summer school programs face to face?
I'm sorry, I don't really understand the question.
Well, I, I work for San Rafael, and Marin County Office of Education, they only run specialized classes. They ran a couple of model classrooms, as did San Rafael, they did for elementary. And I was just wondering, had you been in touch with them to find the, how that went for them?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Gary?
Yes.
Okay, because-
We're very familiar with what's going on in, in Marin County, at the county office.
Okay, because we, I was at the board meeting, their board meeting yesterday and got to see, they did a presentation. They showed what the cohorts look like and, you know, that, you know, having to scan the temperatures and if it was too high, the parents had to answer with a QR code, two questions, you know, and if the questions came back no, then they, or yes, if they did, were exposed to anybody with COVID, they had, they, they weren't allowed to come to school or to the summer program. So I don't, to me, I, I don't know how they're going to roll this out. And to me, some of the things that I think you should look at when you do start to do distance learning is, one, for sure, people that have multiple services, like people with IEPs. Just on my end, I have two grandkids that have special needs, and trying to organize the Zoom meetings for them to meet, each one of them had four or five different service providers, really difficult last, well, you know, when we went into distance learning last time. And I also now have a schedule where I have to be on at eight o'clock. They're probably not going to start till eight thirty, but I'm not going to be able to help them. So, you know, so it's, it's, so one of the things I might suggest is maybe staggering, different schools stagger their start times so that older kids could kind of help younger ones a little bit, or I, you know. I know, it's going to be a challenge. And then, what else?
Almost out of time here.
And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I, as a teacher, I had quite a few students, I teach high school, that did not take advantage of the, the curriculum that was being provided to them. So those kids, I think, should be ones that really need to be pulled in. If they're not accessing the programs that are available, then those are ones that need to be coming on campus first. So that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, according to your, to direction, we have two, we have two more, Jessica Goble and Annika Nelson.
Okay, Jessica?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um, thank you for everything you're doing. I just want to speak to some of the worry. My son is in fifth grade at Penrose, so we've been in distance learning now for almost three weeks. And he was staging a full-on revolt. He was not going to participate whatsoever. And I was very concerned about it, and it's been two and a half weeks, and he's really doing the work. He's really participating. His teachers have done an incredible job getting this kid to participate. And granted, I have privilege in that I'm flexible, I, in my job, and I'm able to be home with him and help him to a certain extent. The teachers are working from school for the most part, and they are engaging the students incredibly. But there is a need, I think, to address inequities and, and to speak to the children who have special needs. Specifically, a plan to identify those who need help and to take the steps to follow through on that help. And maybe possibly the use of facilities by those who most need it to allow for distance might be a good step to take in this situation. A set period of time would likely help us parents and teachers alike, but it's probably going to change, and we should all just know that, because that's, that's what we're in right now. And I want to echo some of the others' concerns, the willingness of staff, the hazard pay, the transparency throughout it all, documents and plans to be published for parents and teachers alike. And then, those are my comments. Thank you very much. I really appreciate the time.
Thank you, Jessica. And Annika will be our last speaker. Annika Nelson?
Hi, thank you so much. I'll be, I'll be quick, as I know, a lot of folks have, have touched on a lot of my concerns. So I'll say, I'm a, I'm a single parent. I have a fourteen-year-old that's entering Petaluma High School. And he just finished Petaluma Junior High. And I, I just have to say that distance learning has been very challenging, and he's falling through the cracks with it. I, I am lucky enough, I do work full-time, but I have a very intensive job, and I've had to kind of try to learn to be a teacher too. I, I'm not a teacher. You guys are extremely underpaid. But I, I just have to express, I expressed how difficult it has been for somebody with special needs, especially at his age, and to be solution-oriented, to be, you know, I acknowledge the question is, what should like criteria be for reopening school? And that sounds kind of like a, a black and white question, where, where I feel like more the solution should be a phased reopening, and each phase kind of dependent on, A, like the need of the child, and, you know, B, is, is the family, like, willing to do it? Like, is it voluntary? Like, I understand some people are high-risk, but some people are not. And I also agree with an earlier statement that I think it's an excellent opportunity to, to look at an outdoor classroom, you know, special needs kids, that class size is already so small. Educating them in an outdoor setting where they're six feet apart with masks, I think is totally doable. So I just wanted to bring up those couple of points, and my last point is a little bit more administrative for you guys. I know you're feeling like a lot of calls here. If you do enable the chat feature and let people make their comments there, you can download that as an Excel spreadsheet and analyze it for, for, with keywords for themes. Just a recommendation for you. Down a bit soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Annika. So, um, we're looking at future business, and I think future business needs to be an action-based board meeting as soon as possible.
What's the sentiment of the board?
I would agree, and I think there's, there's multiple actions that we have to be considering. One is the duration of distance learning, and, and where I'm falling on this is some kind of set schedule. It could be the semester, it might be a quarter, as suggested somewhere in the discussion. Something like that, that gives us, gives consistency. I heard the need for consistency from everybody. And so I want to provide some of that consistency. But another action item is, I think, is that, that decision, I think, does warrant differentiation between secondary and elementary schools.
Absolutely.
They face such different circumstances with regard to hybrid.
And then special ed as well.
And then lastly, the, the, the one that is just, you know, keeps me up at nights is, how do we better serve the families at the margins, at both ends of the margins, during distance learning? And this is the one where something has got to give. I've heard people say we're in a no-win situation. I think, I mean, we might be, but this is where there's going to have to be some give, I think, either on both staffs and parents and communities' willingness to, to physically be at site for specific students who have needs at the margins.
I also think we have to talk about equity as far as ELs go and connectivity. What's happening, you know, can all students get on Zoom when they need to be there? And I heard another parent talk about Parent Square, and some people are not able to get on there. So those are all things we absolutely need to explore.
Parents were literally just got ruled out. I mean, I mean, literally, this week, so.
Today.
Today.
There are parents that are struggling with that. Should we refer them to the site administrator, or?
The school site, the front office.
School site.
Okay, I'm training them all on exactly what to do.
Okay, thank you.
So what I can do is, why don't I, why don't I reach out to each of you individually? Will, Joanna's not here, we'll, I'll see about trying to arrive at a date and time that will work, and that we can try to schedule something sooner rather than later. And we'll, we can probably have something confirmed by tomorrow.
Okay, as far as I'm-
I just wanted to confirm, because we also have on August eleventh is our evening with Circle Up. So just, so as you're looking at dates, that's next Tuesday from-
I would, I want to meet before next Tuesday, Friday or Saturday.
So I also, and I, it depends on what the, what exactly we're acting on, but I think what, what we need to, what I would like to see is the finances that would be required for, for all of the health guidelines that we would have to provide. But also, if we're thinking about equity, and, you know, I've been reading about, you know, these hubs that, where, you know, you work with other nonprofits in the, in your, in your town, and then you have hubs as opposed to pods, so the, they seem like there's two different definitions going on. And there's a pod which is parent-driven, they find the, the teachers, the tutors, the parents form their own, they pay for that service. And it's to supplement the distance learning and the teacher's curriculum.
What about parents that can't afford it, though?
That's, that's my problem. So the hub is supported by, well, this one that was in Oakland was supported by Oakland Reach, which is a nonprofit, and they raised $350,000. And we're able to pay parents to come to different places, centers. Like a lot of parents mentioned, we would have, we have space where these things might, where childcare with academic support could happen. And so I really, really want to explore this as part of this equity question. I know, Gary, you said that we have partners at all the different elementary schools. I don't know whether we do in high school. We may not need it as much in high school, I don't know. But I, I, I think that the financial question is, is essential to understand before I feel comfortable moving from distance learning into, you know-
I think we can start that process, a process of-
Because the timeline would depend. I don't see us having any money if it doesn't pass any relief to the states.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't count on the federal government. I think that's obvious.
Or the state at this point.
Yes.
We can bring back, and we can definitely bring back information, and we can talk about, we can start having that conversation about equity issues. There's a lot being done in that, that area. That's problematic, because there were, you know, Sheldon kind of referred to it. There's kind of different forces that are working against each other on this one, not, not intentionally, but it's just, we've got the health and welfare, and then we've got this significant academic need that we've, we've heard from, from, you know, certain subgroups of students. We can come back on the connectivity piece. We can bring back an action item for you guys to have a discussion about, related to the finances is going to be a longer process. That's, that's going to be a little bit more complicated, because it's all dependent on what type of model you're looking at. And there are very, very different models out there. We can kind of walk through that, but it'll, that, that won't be able, we won't be able to have that for the next, certainly by the time we have this conversation related to, do you want to extend? Do you want to give a, a firm date for distance learning?
So I, I just think that we can't even consider going off distance learning until we have that financial picture, because we have to protect our staff, our teachers, our students, our families. And that costs money, and until we know that, we shouldn't even be talking about going back to school.
Well, it's that, and it's, there, 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 there's so many iterations to this. The, there are a variety of different models that are out there. There's a variety of different hybrid models out there. Some of them are more expensive than others. Some of them create more, that allow for cohorting better than others. Some of them make it much more difficult to do contact tracing. And so we have two very different models that, that have been suggested in committee. One is an elementary model, and one's a high school model. They both have very, very different levels of exposure. And so the particulars of all of that, you know, we would have to kind of dive into, you know. It certainly was never the intent for us to not, to, to transition from distance learning to hybrid until we had addressed all of those issues and had a thorough, thorough vetting of that. You know, the one thing that has not, did not come up, I referenced it just briefly at the last meeting, but did not come up in any of the discussion, is our, our number one concern right now is the inability to get point-of-care information regarding employees, and it could be students if they were at school, that are coming up with symptoms. Contrary to everything that, that I'm, that I've either read or recently watched on television, it's not great right now. The testing turnaround is horrendous. We've had situations where we have had employees that have turned out COVID-positive, that it took seven to eight days-
Oh my God.
-before we even got a test result back. And we were supposedly put at the front of the line. And we had to make decisions about what did we do for other employees that potentially were exposed and had to make decisions blindly. Had we followed the guidelines, under the current guidelines, we would not have had, had quarantine those individuals. We chose to quarantine those individuals out of abundance of caution. But there are some gaps. There's some real, real gaps that are there, and we need to have the ability to, I can't even imagine trying to explain to a parent that if we had a, let's say, a teacher as an example, that was back at school, and let's just say that they started to show, show symptoms, and we asked them to go get tested. And let's just say they went and got tested, and they showed up positive, but they didn't show up positive for eight days, because it took eight days to get the test. So can you imagine us having to try to have that conversation with those parents, the students, that, oh, by the way, your teacher was positive? And the first question that they should have, which is what I would have as a parent, is why didn't you notify us sooner? But under the guidelines, the guidelines do not talk about notification unless there's a certain criteria. So, so point-of-care is huge for us. There has to be immediate turnaround. No matter what happens, that would be the one area that, as a district, we feel very strongly about. We need to have the ability to, to find out immediately where we are with a given, with given employees or students, because we have, we have huge numbers of, obviously, we're a significant portion of the community.
I think that just adds to what I think is the, the majority sentiment expressed today, that we haven't found a hybrid model that we think can work. And I'd rather put our energies into thinking about, how do we make distance learning work better for the families at the margins, you know, outside of that middle distribution? You know, the, the, the hands-on, you know, ag students, like Kim Aronson was talking about, special ed students, the families that don't have bandwidth or space at home. I think we need to put that, the energies that was at, on hybrid into that. How do we make distance learning work better for everybody?
I agree.
And they just commit to it at a certain spot, yeah.
I agree, Sheldon, and we also need to talk about separating secondary from elementary.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they are two different animals.
There's a stronger, I think there's a stronger possibility of bringing elementary back sooner than secondary.
You know, I've been thinking about that a lot, and I was thinking that, you know, like a few, a few of the speakers had mentioned, you know, to prioritize and then bring certain groups back once, you know, before everybody, like, not, and maybe not even do a hybrid, but once we're off the watch list, maybe allowing these really vulnerable populations and electives the ability to meet in person, you know, kind of like a, a slow rollout kind of thing. I was thinking about it in terms of hybrid, but we, we don't, we don't need to do that. If we're off the watch list and we have, because man, it's like, thinking it, you know. I just think that would be helpful for those vulnerable populations that need that in class. And it doesn't have to be eight hours, you know.
Exactly, and we can't, but at the, at the end of the day, we can't talk about any of that or plan on any of that until we voted on what, what and how, like, if we're doing distance learning and at least temporarily, how long and when we're going to reassess? Because it, we don't need to be reassessing every week or really likely every month. We need to commit and give everyone some time and structure, and yeah, like, there are tons of classes that just straight up can't be done on Zoom. And I, I personally could not teach a bunch of five-year-olds over Zoom. I couldn't teach a bunch of anyone over Zoom, but that's not the point.
Not all Zoom, so, thank God.
Yeah. So I think, first of all, just doing an action item at the beginning of the next special meeting, getting it official, so that parents and students and staff have the most time possible to start planning and commit to, you know, whatever we do commit to. I'm thinking of a quarter or two of the grading periods personally, but I would be open to a whole semester.
Is the grading period six weeks, is that correct?
I know, it's a third of a semester.
There's like two grading periods in a semester, three grading periods in a semester.
Right, so is, is there a quarter in our district? There is, or?
Isn't a quarter nine weeks?
Teachers in our district, don't they usually teach, at least I used to, our grading period was-
Every six weeks.
Right.
Every six weeks, yeah, we don't have quarters.
Don't have quarters.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't think quarters make sense for my understanding of our schools, but I could be old and gone.
We have a board meeting on the eighteenth. We could, we could set aside some time specifically to look at the equity and the connectivity piece. We're already dealing with those issues. Connectivity is a, a huge issue.
I think we should have some level of discussion at the special meeting. I don't think it needs to be four hours of discussion, but. You know, I mean, there are two, there are still two hundred participants here, so I would think that even after we, you know, officially vote, however we're going to vote, there will still be people who want to chime in, and I just want to say to all the participants, if you didn't feel like you got a chance to talk, please do feel free to email us. We do read them all, and Ellen does an excellent job of responding, and-
I try.
We, yeah. We, yeah, we want, we want to hear you. We do. So even if you think it's a repetitive point on email where we're not crunched for time, feel free to repeat, repeat, repeat.
Okay, so what we're going to do is, we will bring a, we will coordinate with you a time. We'll certainly get that out, like, to everybody. We'll look at an action item related to, to the instructional method for a 2021 school year. We'll write something up for distance, or at least open it up so that you can have the conversation about, and hopefully come narrow down to a, a set least amount of time that, that you feel will give us enough of a window to, for planning purposes, and also for, for all, for all stakeholders, really. And then we'll leave, allow some opportunity for some additional discussion in these other areas. But we will, on the eighteenth, we'll bring like an update, we will bring updates on the eighteenth related to work that's being done in equity and work that's being done in connectivity. We didn't share any of that. There is just a ton of things that are taking place in all of these areas. But, but the reality of the situation is, you could have predicted we'd be right here two months ago, because the, you know, the, the rules of engagement essentially for schools for this year did not occur until the last four weeks. And when all of that came, came out from the state level, we had ninety-five percent of our staff that are, that are on break. And so just this week is the first, the first two days that our principals have been back. You know, our year rounds, yes, have been, have been going strong, but everybody's just essentially coming back at this particular point of time. And so it has been a mad scramble to try to get, to try to get folks together to do a lot of this work. And, and the folks that were doing the work over the summer, to their credit, they were doing it because they were committed. They were committed to this, and they wanted to make sure that they were doing what was best for the kids. I think we have a lot in place, but there's still a lot of questions that we have, and it's changing day by day. Literally, we set directives out last week from the county and county health that we have to undo tomorrow and send a different directive. It's just, it's a moving target. It's going to continue, continue to be a moving target. But I think that, you know, I think you heard some themes. There were some definite themes and pockets of real concern that you heard from families and from teachers. And so it'll be good, I think you have a lot of information to, now, to, to make some decisions in the form of an action item, so we'll bring that back, okay?
Okay.
I was wrong. We don't need seventy-two hours, because it would be a special or emergency meeting, whatever.
Yeah, you don't.
Yeah, but still, I mean, I think, I still think aiming for at least forty-eight hours notice is best for, you know, stakeholders and whatnot.
Yes.
We're shooting for within a week, is that right?
Yeah.
Before Friday, right?
I think so.
I think we're going to try to coordinate schedules as quickly as we can.
Okay. I'm going to officially adjourn the meeting. I want to thank all the participants. That's one of the nice things about Zoom, is we've been seeing a lot more participation at our board meetings, and I really appreciate that. Meeting is adjourned.